And we are live.
Good evening and welcome to the August 3rd work session of Dublin City Council. In these extraordinary times, flexibility is important. And this is a rapidly evolving environment. Given current conditions, we have made the decision to have this public meeting virtually. Maintain the safety of all of council, city staff and our meeting attendees. You can access the live stream on the city's website. Tonight's meeting is a work session format. It allows in-depth discussion by city council and staff. There will be opportunity for public comment on these matters when they are scheduled at future regular council meetings. With that, I would ask Homer, please take us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Homer, much appreciated. Anne, would you please call roll?
Sure, Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Mr. Reiner. He's not here yet. Ms. Fox.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Mayor Amrose Grooms.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
And Ms. Aludo.
Here.
I'm sorry?
John did say here, by the way.
Oh, John did say here, okay, great. Make that notification, sure, appreciate it. So tonight, we have a real treat. We have Kenny McDonald, that's with us, CEO of One Columbus. And he's got a presentation for us, forward looking through economic drivers, incentives, partnerships, relationships that I think will be of a tremendous amount of interest to all of us. Kenny and I have spoken a couple of times over the last, I don't know, month or so. And, you know, they do such a great job at One Columbus. And we really appreciate their partnership with them. And they've been a tremendous asset to the city of Dublin. And we have just enjoyed that relationship. So Kenny's going to walk us through some things, I think, a presentation. And then we'll have some Q and A discussion, hopefully, following that. So with that, welcome, Mr. McDonald. We are so pleased to have you and thanks for spending your Monday evening with us.
Well, thank you to you and the entire council and staff that's on the line. I have great news for you that I don't, I'm not going to open up with a PowerPoint for you. I forwarded one, which had a bunch of insights into it that hopefully you got a chance to look at. We've been, we've been putting those out every week. And that was, that was kind of a wrap up of quarter two, which I sent along to everybody. If you get a chance to dig into it a little bit, I'm happy to answer some questions on it. But some pretty fascinating things in there, starting at a national level. And then coming back down to our region and some of the industries that we're focused on. Each week that I get it, I'm amazed, our team does a super job of putting that together. But there's some alarming things in there. And there are some things in there that should give us some comfort too. I'd like to just start with saying that a huge thank you to the city of Dublin and for all of your leadership on a, on a daily basis. You may not know how many times we, our team talks to your staff over the course of a day. But it's probably multiple times with all the things that we're interacting on. And that could be on any level, economic development or otherwise. Just want to, just want to thank you for your leadership. And, and thank you for having us for this conversation. I think it's a really important time to do it. I'm literally coming off a three hour strategic planning call for our, from our national association. And, you know, there, these are, these are times that require steady hand. And also, you know, maybe the opportunity to step back and consider some really bold actions at the same time. And so I thought I would, I thought I would just walk you through our view of the economy. Kind of a, the status of our regional coalition. And the focus of that, I think more important than ever, is something to talk about. I want to, I want to dig into a few things about the emerging industries. Because maybe more than any other community, Dublin has opportunities in all of these. And they, and there's some really interesting, you know, we're breaking them down. All of them are changing pretty rapidly, all being driven by technology. And if you're a player at all. I want to reiterate that we actually have a very clear plan. And I feel really confident about the principles of that plan. On a day-to-day basis, we have to think about our tactics. And we're changing a lot of our tactics, but the principles of the plan are very much the same. And then I'll go into, as I, as I do that, maybe some things that are relevant to the city of Dublin directly. And then that will leave quite a bit of time for questions, which is, and please interrupt me as I go through this. So when you look at the breakdown of our economy, there's, for me, there's very few surprises in what is happening. Because we spent the last 18 months, leading up to the end of the decade, studying the industries, studying the situation that we're in and where the trends were taking us. COVID has, what COVID has done is accelerated it all greatly. So you probably saw a bunch of the retail downsizings last week with L Brands and Ascena and DSW. And there's other retail brands that are going through changes. That was all very predictable. Now, that was predictable over a five-year period, maybe even a decade. That all happened in about a six-month period. And some of those companies were actually really strong going into this, but would have still had to change. Right? That's just one example in one of our industries that's, that's being impacted. The automotive sector, with all of the connections that the Dublin area and the 33-quarter have with Honda. We know there's tremendous change going on in the automotive world and in engineering and in mobility. And that's all being accelerated by this. Or perhaps you saw the announcement today of Lordstown and the new public company that's coming out of that and the electric vehicles that are going to be pushed out of the Lordstown facility. Those are things that are becoming a little bit more normal. And we're going to be a player in some of that, right? So those are just two industry examples. I'll give you one more, which is in the finance and insurance industries, which you have dozens of major players in your, your area. I might even add healthcare services to that. Where we have thousands of jobs tied up in those industries, in the backend of them. And the automation in those industries is being rapidly changed, right? And the work from home and the technology we're using today is only going to accelerate. So everything that was, everything that was planned, of course, I'm surprised by COVID. Of course, I'm surprised by all of the destruction we've had. But when you really step back, it was, it's actually very predictive. So we feel really comfortable with where our plans were. That's how we're thinking about the economy. Our work is still very focused on the economic base. How do we work, how do we make the economic base work for us? That is, how do we bring new money in to our economy in central Ohio and in the communities and make it up? And never more important, if we ever needed a stark reminder of where the money comes from, we've gotten it over the last five months, right? And how our tax systems work and what really fuels everything. The best thing that we could do over the next year is build a solid base. And that's why One Columbus from its 2020 was started 10 years ago, was to make sure that base was strong so that small businesses could thrive and feed off of that. And that exploded, we were doing phenomenal. And I would still say that our base is stronger than most. But of course, our small businesses in our retail sector at a street level is being greatly impacted and damaged in some ways permanently. And we're going to have to keep working on that. Our regional organization is, if we didn't have one going into this, I think we would be creating one right now. And the work that was done over the last five months, the sharing of best practices, the commodity, just the networking that has to take place to, you know, look to other communities about the creative things that they're doing. And we've got a lot of them that are doing some really cool things with, you know, whether that's Delaware or Pickaway County, and just people are learning from each other. And we're a place that still convenes those professionals like Colleen and her staff. And believe me, they share things and they get better through the network. I'm also really proud that we have over 250, almost 260 private sector investors that take the dollars and the city like Dublin gives us and leverage them times, you know, maybe 13 or 14 times. And help us go out and continue to do our work. As far as our daily work, the tactics look a lot different. I'm doing a lot more of this, of course, also our entire team. But we've not, we've really not stopped marketing very aggressively in two ways. And I'll go into, in, in both of those in a second. But outreach to local companies is a way to market our region and to make sure we're in the boardroom as companies are making decisions for their future, whether that's consolidating, it's reshoring, it's adding jobs, doing projects. And then it's very aggressively marketing nationally and internationally. And we've not stopped doing any of that either. Our emerging industries, let me just touch on a few of those. And every one of the sectors have one. I mentioned automotive just a bit ago. And I'm still very thankful that we have Honda as a partner, as our primary base for that industry. It is one of the strongest companies, I think, just below Toyota in terms of total strength and flexibility as we go through this. Having their engineering and their tech headquarters here as well is incredibly powerful for us. All their work they're doing in AI and things like that feeds into, in particular, kinds of things that might supplement them, maybe residing in Dublin somewhere and be doing R and D dens like people like Danzo and stuff like that are doing. But really increasingly, it's about electric cars. And it's going to be more about mobility. And so, you know, where are we positioned on that? And Honda's going to have to be a partner and a solution provider for that, but that's, that's one of them. Advanced computing, the AWS center that you have there. And all the things that are starting to be built off of that, we are starting to see an acceleration of both small and large projects that are tied to those companies. We've all wished that we bought more Amazon stock about 20 years ago. And the biggest piece of that company is AWS, which part of that sits in Dublin. And that, that advanced computing, that is, you know, we've become a fairly dominant player in the US, maybe one of the top 10 locations in the entire US for advanced computing. And we're going to have continued opportunities up and downstream from that. And it's making companies like Cardinal in your community even more competitive because of the proximity to those centers. Finance and insurance is really all about, you know, what are they going to do with automation? And then where's fintech and insuretech? Like what's happening and are we a friendly place for that? We just initiated a major study that will be looking at our overall competitive competitiveness for the insuretech industry. We're looking at is Ohio, you know, versus six or seven other states. The right regulatory market that will have so many of these insuretech companies moving around the country, coming out of the technology industry. We have one of the largest and fastest growing startups in the, I should say, in the industry, but maybe even in the country with root insurance in our community. So we're on the radar screen because of people like that and the venture capital that they've raised and the thousands of jobs that they've created across the country, about 800 of them here. But that's going to be the focus of that industry and are we going to win or not? And how do we position ourselves? Healthcare is something that we always talked about. But, you know, the lens on this is changing pretty rapidly. We, we've just completed an analysis of, you know, our competitiveness for gene and cell therapeutics. We've had several wins come out of Nationwide Children's Hospital and Ohio State University. We have some of the most famous researchers in the world in those institutions. And they, those researchers are a goldmine. They, they put us on the map. And we're starting to see not only companies coming out of those institutions, but companies like Sarepta, which is setting up in our region, moving here from Boston, is again, one of the darlings of the industry. And they're saying Columbus, Ohio and surrounding region is, you know, one of the main players in the entire industry. That certainly wasn't a, wasn't an industry or an emerging industry on our radar screen even five years ago. That was totally inside the institution, but it wasn't being found in buildings and facilities in our region like it is today. And then let me just put retail and econ together. Because the, the retail world at any level, apparel, food, everything, everything you can think is exploding and e-commerce is driving it all. We're ordering our food that way, the deliveries that are coming to your doorstep. That maybe you did a little bit of it before, but I bet you order more stuff to your home than you ever did. And that's just e-commerce. And so there's an entire vertical industry up and down that enables it and delivers what you're ordering. And thankfully, we're already an enormous player in this. We're a huge logistics center. We're obviously a fairly significant retail player in food and apparel with Wendy's and White Castle and all the retail brands we have in apparel. We have some real core competencies in that. In fact, I'll give you an example from last week. We sent out a note about some of the downsizings in our retailers to a group of national consultants. And we, we got several responses, people that were very interested in that talent and moving facilities here so that they could capture that talent and know how. And they're in, and they're in all kinds of businesses. But they know that those people know how to sell things and they, and they know e-commerce. And so, you know, we're excited about, we're so excited about where that's going. But it's not, it's going to be messy. And it's going to be really hard to make that transition for our communities and for our businesses. So let me just go into the plan really quick. And I think I will try to work in how maybe we work together as we go down that. The, the first tenet of our strategic plan was to serve existing businesses. And I would even go further and say, the purpose of that objective is to make sure that we have the most competitive companies in the world. So if I think about Dublin, Ohio, and I think about the companies that are there, you know, starting at the top with Cardinal Health with, as a huge employer, or Wendy's, all the way down to the small and mid-sized players. When you call upon them and when we call upon them with your development team, you want to know, how can we make you more competitive? And what's over the horizon? All the things that I just said, I'm just touching the surface of some of these industries. We're finding out fascinating things as we go through this. So we've talked to about 200 companies during the COVID, height of the initial COVID phase, March and April. And then we've talked to maybe almost another 200 across our region since then. We're doing about 30 or 40 a month with companies of all sizes across the region. And we're asking those, those exact questions. And we're also asking, how are you thinking about your facilities? There will be more location decisions in every type of business in the next two years than there have been in the last eight. And whether that's, you know, you deciding to close one shop or take 10 facilities to five or two facilities to one. Or if this crisis is favoring your business model and the industry that you're in, you might go from two facilities to 10 facilities. Our game is to make sure that we're in front of our businesses and we're asking for the order. And we're asking how we could be the most competitive place for them so that they could dominate their industries. If we have companies that are competitive, we are going to have a terrific economy. Number one is serve our existing businesses. It's where everything emanates from. And it just goes back to the basic tenet of you've got to take care of the existing customers. If you do that and you know what's going on in their business, you're going to have other things, you know, good things happen to you. Second is, I have a strong feeling about this, maybe more so than I ever have before. Attracting industry is going to be more competitive and it's going to be more important than ever. If all of the functioning businesses in Dublin came back online in a similar fashion where they were, which they will not. We know that there's damage and some of them are just not returning with as many people and things like that. We're never going to get back to where we were. And we're certainly not going to be where we need to be in the next three or five years or over the next decade. We are going to have to attract new businesses to central Ohio and to Dublin, Ohio. If we're going to have a sustainable tax base, we're going to attract, continue to attract great talent. And we're going to build the economy that we want to build. Because there's going to be a lot of moving around. We think we can win that game. And we do have about 100, we have 104 projects as of today. We lost about 25% of our pipeline through the initial 60 days of this. Some has come back online and then a lot of this has been replaced by new companies sending us RFPs and engaging with us in our, in our daily work. So attracting industry and filling up that bucket in different ways with diverse companies is going to be unbelievably critical. A note on attracting industry and perhaps even on serving our existing industries, that it's a common question now for us to get about, you know, how are, how are we addressing economic equity and social equity in our communities? It's a, a question that perhaps some companies would have asked us before. And increasingly more of them are, I think legitimately asking us, you know, how is your community tackling that issue? And can we get, are you going to be the kind of location where we can recruit and retain not only the best people, but the most diverse talent? And that talent's going to feel comfortable there in the long term. That's, that's becoming a very common question that we, we are going to have to get better and better at addressing by doing real things, you know, and having real substantive things that we're doing. Also going to be critically important, the investments that Dublin has made over, you know, 20 years, I'd say maybe even more, in the technology industry and accelerating high-growth businesses and attracting entrepreneurs to your community favors you. You know, you, you have made those investments, you've been in it for the long term. You've been sending signals and building infrastructure favorable to entrepreneurs and high-growth companies. And you're, you're going to be in a better position because of that. Absolutely critical that we start and then grow those companies here. I'm less worried, now, it's very callous to say this, but I'm less worried about some of the retail industries because we have far less control over that. We actually have some control over, are we going to win in venture-backed tech businesses? Because we can, we know that involves infrastructure and it involves talent. Two things that we can do something about. We can't do anything about street traffic and the rules around people going into our restaurants and bars and things like that. And so we're really focused on how do we win, how do we win that stuff? If we have that economic activity, when we're able to move around again, I think a lot of the retail businesses are going to come and follow. And they'll go to where the jobs are being created. We want Dublin to be one of those places. So serve existing businesses, attract new ones, accelerate high-growth industries. And then here's just three final ones. One is prepare, have the most prepared communities in the country. How do we have the most prepared community in the country? As we, I think of it as a region, can think of it as Dublin. To me, that means at least three things. One is physical. You still have to have a place for businesses to be. And whether that's, you know, shared space, small space. It's the variety of spaces that the industries that we just talked about are demanding. And I do feel over time that is going to include Class A office space with big footprints and things like that. So some of the product that you've been building in Dublin and that you've had for decades will still be important. And we don't know exactly how that will play out, but I think we'll have some companies that go totally virtual and maybe never return. I think the majority will probably be in some kind of what we would call normal space. In fact, they may need more space for less people. So investing in real estate and development projects with your partners there in the community, I think, is really critical. Two is to prepare, continue to prepare mentally for some of these, you've always, you're always prepared. Dublin is one of the most prepared places we can come to. You know what you want to do, you know what you won't do, you know what you want, you know what you don't want. But some of these new issues around equity and how people are going to operate and function anymore, those are new questions that maybe nobody knows the answer to exactly. I think what I would encourage is, is sessions like this to talk through and to talk to businesses. Talk to corporate real estate planners, people like that who can actually give us more insight. We're trying to do a lot of that ourselves. And if anybody says they have a definitive answer right now, I would, that's the one thing I would question. We're in the middle of this, we're not, we're not through this yet, so there's lots to come. And then finally, I think you have to be prepared financially. Now, there's lots of questions that we're getting. There'll be some communities that are going to have to step back from what they've done in the past. And they will not be able to be as aggressive with some of their incentives. And perhaps it's not, if they're going to achieve some of their goals around equity and some of their agreements with the school districts and stuff, maybe more question than, than they have been in a long time. I will say at a state level, we're in a better position than almost any state that I could think of because of Jobs Ohio's existence. So a private model, we have a big capacity to do gap financing, be very aggressive with deals, not just this year, but in the coming years because of the setup of Jobs Ohio. And I think that's going to turn into a bigger and bigger advantage. They've been incredible through this process, helping to fund some companies in Dublin in your backyard through innovation loans and some debt forgiveness. And a number of programs that they've launched in the last 120 days. And that's just the beginning of where they're going with some of the programming that they have. And they're, and they're stepping up like never before. So we're going to be in a good position at a state level. And then not all of our communities are going to be able to be where they, where they were six months ago. Dublin is in a great position on that. I think that'll end up being a strength. Finally, we're staying engaged globally. We do think that there will be opportunities that are driven from foreign companies to come to the US. I'm not sure I would use the term reshoring because that, that connotates them moving an operation back and leaving something behind. It's more that, you know, all of our weaknesses as communities, everything was exposed through this. And it obviously exposed our global supply chains and exposed some of the weaknesses we had perhaps in our backdoor operations and the service operations that we had in some of our finance and insurance and healthcare. You may see government-driven reshoring in that the US government will back, you know, perhaps the pharmaceutical supply chain, will maybe even enforce some of the data that was held in servers internationally, to be held in the US now. Be things like that, just for security reasons with the tensions around the world. And quite frankly, just everybody, this is also a conversation, whether you're in Europe or Asia, because they're doing kind of the same thing. And we'll have our version of those. And we're seeing a few opportunities that are actually being driven already. US government alone being a huge customer and driver of something. US government alone being a huge customer and driver of something. And then finally, just marketing and telling your story. I think it's more important than ever that we do that. And it's obviously a very difficult time. If we were a company, we would have to be having very serious conversations about how do we market? Given all of the economic, public health and social disruption that we're, that we're living through. But it doesn't mean we should freeze. I actually think the opposite. I think that we have a phenomenal story to tell. I think if we do the work, we're going to have an even better story to tell than most on how open and smart our region is and our communities are for talent and for companies. But we got to do the work. We have to just be very aggressive about saying this is who we are and we're proud of it and we, we would welcome people into our community. I think if we continue to do that, we're in a really good position. I'll just end by saying operating regionally maybe has never been as important as it is right now. I think we've got a lot to learn from each other. And you can call regional, you can say regionally, you can look at it as we're all Midwesterners. And I think our part of the country has to hang together and get through this because our region has been hit differently than the Southeast or the Southwest or California has been hit by this. So there's some unique characteristics happening. If I look at the data as a Midwestern state and community, and then I would reinforce that locally that still our solutions around mobility and around talent will be, be driven through public-private partnerships that go beyond the borders of any one community. And so I'll just end there and hopefully dive into some questions and some, some of the data that I sent before.
Great. Thanks for that, Kenny. Well, that's good valuable information there. I want to open it up to questions and comments. I know I have a few, like, you guys an opportunity, you had some? Yes, Catherine, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Kenny. Very helpful. There is so much happening so fast. I appreciated the information you sent us and, you know, quarter to quarter, it's going to be dynamic. You know, one of the things that, that I ponder in, I know you guys are spending a lot of time thinking about that, as, as people think about where their workforce is. You know, one of our, roll the clock back six months, one of our biggest concerns was we don't have enough of the right workforce here. We have to do talent attraction just to keep up with the pace. Now, when companies are saying, you can live anywhere you want to, you know, pick your life, pick your company, they don't have to be in the same location. So how are you guys managing through that? What are you hearing from companies? What is your advice to us on that? I'd appreciate. Thank you.
So maybe a couple of things come to mind. I saw that Redfin, who's like a real estate analytics firm out of Seattle, published something today and said that eighteen percent of the home sales were done sight unseen in the last few months. What that tells me is, I might be a worker in New York City and said, oh, I'm from Ohio. I'm going to, I might look at the house online listed in Dublin, Ohio, but I, I'm not, I, I can't get there. I'm just going to go ahead and buy it, especially with interest rates being, you know, less than three percent in some, in some ways. So that's an indication that, you know, perhaps some of these markets are going to have some people moving from them fairly quickly and, and hopefully that a lot of those talented people end up in our communities, including Dublin. It's just a side note. Two is, you know, all the labor shortages that we had going into COVID didn't go away. The, the, the skills gap in technology and in multi-skill manufacturing skills and things like that. And certainly in IT and stuff. We, we're going to have a little bit more slack in the rope when companies are hiring in your community. But we still have a really big gap. And I, I, you know, investing in education and investing in workforce training and working directly with your companies on that in your community is going to be as important as it was six months ago. Just because our unemployment rate is higher, doesn't mean that those critical areas are any less important. In fact, you know, if you can, if you can double down on that, you have the capacity to do it right now. That's what you got to do. And then I'll just reinforce some things that you've already done. You know, you're building an awesome community. You have the broadband capacity throughout your community that you've invested in for so long. You have the community assets and lifestyle there that's been expanded over the last ten years for different types of families and individuals to live in, in Dublin that have options that they didn't have ten years ago. That's really critical. We got to continue to be creative and think about ways like, you know, where we're going to put these people. Obviously, it's working from home is going to be something that I think, at least for a few years, that we're all going to be doing more of. And so, you know, the tax stress and navigating that tightrope is going to be a really critical one. And you're pretty lucky, you're, you're a community that a lot of people live in, but you also have some of those offices there. That's a pretty unique situation. In fact, might be almost wholly unique in our region with the number of people.
Thank you. Yes, Jane, go ahead, Jane.
Okay. Kenny, I want to ask you, you know, it's been interesting with this COVID. Even if we get a vaccine, I think, like you said, it's, it's changing the way businesses look and how they're going to function. So, you know, as we strategize on our economic development, we were looking at targeting particular industries because we thought we had strengths there. But is that enough? When you talk to businesses, you know, in the country that are thinking about moving, they're going to move for other reasons now because they're, they're either trying to look at a different way to make their company profitable because they have to change. So are they asking, what are the questions they asking you? Are they asking you, obviously, is it good schools? But are they looking for urban offices? Are they looking for places where they can be flexible and pivot easily if we have things like the pandemic? I mean, are they looking for places that they can be in an office, yet they can be out of an office? Do they want their workforce near them? Do they want their workforce in the suburbs? I mean, are you sensing that they're looking for different things now than they did maybe three years ago?
I think the, I, I think the principles of it don't change. I, I do think that this is going to be an opportunity for corporate America and for lots of small, mid-sized businesses who perhaps were in compromised locations to have a conversation about where they were. And that compromised location for one company could have been that they're in the middle of Manhattan. Or, or they're perhaps in a much smaller community. Maybe they're in a, they're in a technology industry, but they're in a very small community. And they feel like they can recruit to that market. And, or the, they don't have the infrastructure there. We're in a good spot, in my opinion, because we're big enough to have scale and amenities and infrastructure around this, including technology infrastructure, which is going to be the most critical. And we have a Midwestern, very competitive lifestyle in terms of cost. We're not the cheapest place for sure. But we have lots of amenities and we have a big state where a lot of people are from. And what that means to me is there's a big trend of people moving back to where their families are from.
Okay.
So, you know, there's lots of people like working in New York that are from Ohio. You might see some of them relocate to be closer to their family because of a variety of reasons right now. What I, I don't know how it'll play out because I think we're at the beginning, not even the middle now on how this will play out. What I'm sure of is that we need to be talking to individual companies very deeply and asking them how they're approaching it. What we're learning is it's very individual. It's very much case by case.
So if you only had a hundred dollars and you could, you could spend it in a community to attract a business, would your first twenty dollars would be on technology infrastructure? Would it be on the ability to get around transportation? Would it be on lifestyle? Would it be on office space? Would it be on like businesses that feed off of each other? I mean, if, you know, if we have to really conserve our, our resources to attract these businesses, what do you think right now? I mean, to me, it seems like technology infrastructure and like businesses attract each other. I mean, you, I don't know though. I mean, I'm, I'm just.
Well, technology infrastructure is certainly a hu- huge one. But communities that actually can have balance are really critical right now. Right? So, you know, I think if only, if you only have technology infrastructure, but you don't have much of a lifestyle. You know, in some ways, location may not matter for some of the office stuff that you're working on. In other ways, you know, you're pretty close to most of these supply chains. And so again, I, I would, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. I mean, I'm incredibly biased. But I, if I look, I, I don't know, I, I wouldn't want to be the economic developer in, in Manhattan. I, I probably wouldn't want to be in a very rural area right now, even though that there, there are some good things happening in those areas right now. I think that we've got kind of the best of both worlds, especially in the suburbs of, of the area where you can strike that work-life balance really easily. And that lifestyle that you've built in Dublin over decades is maybe turning out to be an even bigger advantage right now. The one caveat to that is that what we said with our plan last year is if we want to be truly the most prosperous, we're not going to be able to do that unless we start to very intentionally close some of the gaps under the growth in education, in health disparities from top to bottom in our community. And in particular with our African-American community, we have to really close gaps. And the communities that can add that to the mix and find ways to close some of those gaps and do all the other things that you're doing so well are going to, they're really going to win.
Thanks, Kenny.
Yes, Christina, go ahead.
Thank you. So in the past, having availability to educated and trained workforce has been an advantage for Dublin with remote working and, you know, one of my very best friends, her company is closing their office here in Columbus. They have their main office in Denver and basically they're being told, you're going to work from home until, unless you're traveling to Denver. So, you know, given that that's sort of something that's happening right now, how does that affect workforce development and access to an educated workforce?
Well, maybe two things I'd say about that. One is I think the power of a long view is going to be really important right now. So if we look out a decade, I would, I would, I'll bet that same hundred dollars, Jane, that that I don't think I have that in my opponent right now. I think I got about six dollars in there, but I would bet that on things normalizing towards where we are, the, the mean right now. Meaning, you know, at some point when, when there's a different side to this, Cardinal will say, we're going back to the office. You know, because while it does work for some, it's incredibly hard to run a team virtually. It's incredibly hard to tap into the creativity of the interaction. And quite frankly, the reason that business excites people is that you're with people. If you talk to anybody that's been away from their team, you guys have been away from each other rather than you see each other, you get energized by that. Well, that's one big factor that over time, let's look out three years, five years, ten years, that I would bet on physical spaces being equally important as they are today. And then the second piece of that is the ability to deliver online workforce education and get really creative about that is going to change things forever. That, that will be something that stays a little bit more permanent because it's just too easy to do it. Whether you're delivering any kind of programming this way, you can reach more people, it's cheaper. And quite frankly, in some ways, it's better. You, you can almost do it as good in some ways, in some forms, as, as, as good as you can in, in other ways. I'm not for doing that in school all the time and, you know, getting an Ohio State degree or something completely online. But there's certainly things where I could learn coding, I could learn job skills and things like that, that this way, as good as I can in the other way.
Super. Yeah, thank you. That makes really good sense. So just to sort of extrapolate from that even more, so will, will remote working, do you think, change sort of the target clusters that we identified that are clusters of sort of advantage and of interest to Dublin? You know, like the West Innovation District and, and putting in research and development? Or should that remain a focus, a cluster of focus for us?
I can't think of anything that I would walk away from that you're currently doing. I do think that it's worth pausing and asking the question as you do development projects, you know, is the, you know, is this the way this is, is, is going? Is the product that we're going to try to invest in and foster, is that going to work? You know, in the short term here, at least. And that's a logical way to approach it. It does cause you to think a little differently in the short term. Over the long term, I could be wrong, of course, but I just think things will, will factor back towards the of being a little, you know, not the way it was, but you're still going to have big office buildings and parking. You're still going to have a, for the most part, we're not going to do what we did with our streets and our vehicles. We might be, they may look different or sound different or be electric or something. But we're still going to have to be a mobility-driven society with, you know, that wants to congregate in big, in big spaces.
Yeah. Back to the workforce, just a little bit. I, I wonder if there's opportunity to, as you alluded to earlier, think about how you fill the gap in the disparity, just in terms of structural structural racism, when you're able to be able to reach more workforce that aren't physically located near you. Like, is, do you see an opportunity there for us to reach members of the workforce that aren't physically located in Dublin, but that Dublin companies could now have access to that they might not have thought they had access to before, given remote working?
Yes. Let, let me give you an example from a committee that I was on the other day, which I thought was kind of fascinating. A good friend of mine runs the Atlanta Beltline, which is, you know, you could walk all the way around Atlanta now. There's a, there's a belt line that ties the old railroad tracks and walking trails and stuff, and it's a complete circle around Atlanta. And they drive all the development around that. And their entire executive team is African-American, incredibly diverse group. But when they looked at their policies and the vendors that they were choosing to do some of their work and the way that they were putting their contracts together, and this is after a couple of years of having that team in place and stuff like that, they found that it wasn't any measurably any better than if it had been an executive team that looked like me. And I think what, what I took away from that is policies and procedures and things like that matter and pausing to say, are we going to be the kind of community where contractors, minority contractors and stuff are attracted to our community because of those kinds of things? And, and Dublin is an incredibly progressive place in a lot of ways and you're constantly looking at those things. But that's where the magic happens is, is small tweaks and just challenging ourselves to look at some things differently than we've looked at in, in maybe a long time. And challenging things that are the, you know, standard operating procedure in a lot of ways. Like, if we can do that, we'll drive more wealth building across different types of, of communities. And if you're doing that, you could market that. I think you're going to attract the entrepreneur, you're going to attract resident and other things downstream.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? I got a couple of things I'd like to ask here. No one else have any further questions? Kenny, you said that you see Oh, Kenny, you, you said that you see around thirty or so companies a month and you ask them, how can we be more competitive? What answers are they giving you when you ask that question?
Well, some of them are being transformed so fast. And, you know, their businesses are changing so rapidly, um, that they might not even know. You know, there's, and, and this, this, uh, you know, business model changed to being, you know, the delivery model of e-commerce and things like that. You get some pretty interesting answers. On the other hand, it comes back to, can I get the people? Um, and then our regulatory market. You know, a lot of our industries, I mentioned a bunch of them, um, regulatory market in, in mobility, regulatory market, market in health and finance and insurance, critical. And I'm asking the question without any prescription, can we be a more competitive state? Is there something that we could change now? You guys know better than most that changing tax policies and things right now is going to be really difficult. But if we look at our regulatory markets really heavily, how are we regulating industries and businesses and things like that? Can we, um, you know, we've all learned to be incredibly flexible through this. Can we continue to apply that so that they can be a more, um, and, and we're getting answers from some of them. They're saying, yeah, I, you know, if, if, if you could be more like this state or you could be more like this community in this, in this, for our industry, that would be a little bit better. And we're trying to aggregate some of that data. Again, it's happening so fast, sometimes they don't even know. And we're doing it together with your team. So I think everybody's walking away with a to-do list every time.
I'm sure you're inventorying those answers at some point whenever you all are ready. It would be nice to, to hear a summary of those answers in whatever format makes sense to put them together. But, um, the next question I have is around, you talked about housing and buying homes sight unseen and things of that nature. So in, in 2019, one of this council's goals was to be the most connected community in America. That was a mobility, that was broadband fiber. So how, how much do you see that being a role in housing trends of the future in terms of attracting the kind of entrepreneur or the kind of folks that will get our economy really humming along again? What, what role do you think, and because that's going to be our, our, the next thing on our agenda tonight is our 2035 framework plan, and that's certainly going to be a topic of conversation as we look at who do we, who do we want to be in the year 2035?
Yeah, I mean, the, the broadband conversations, I'll just start there. Broadband conversations that I've been part of in the last five months have been fascinating. You know, there's, there's, um, and they're national as well as local here. You know, arguably, you're in one of the better positions of any community when it comes to that. But you still have people that, um, not necessarily because there's not wires to their home, but because of the cost of it or, you know, other environmental factors that would go into it. You know, maybe those kids aren't able to take care of, um, you know, they, they, they can't participate in school as easy. We're all, we're all hearing the stories play out and some of the numbers are astonishing. And if you look at the big metropolitan districts and stuff like that, including here at Columbus, you know, I think we've got to increasingly think of it just as a right, like water coming out of your faucet. You just expect it. And, and I think that's, uh, we're in a position now where we have to, we have to skate to where that is going. I think that's the most critical thing. And that's, I would, if, if I'm moving to Dublin, I want to know how the community is attacking that for the entire community.
Do you see that there might be?
Go ahead.
Do you see that there might be a legitimate movement to have connectivity, that sort of connectivity be treated as utility?
Well, I just, yeah, I know as a company, you're going to deliver that to me and I can pay for it. I think as a business owner, I might be asking a little beyond that and saying, but what are we doing for the entire community? And, you know, what about, what about every neighborhood in our city? And because if, if that's really disconnected and we're falling behind there, and those, these are areas where we're going to have to work together recently too, because that workforce is coming from all over. So that's a, that's a critical issue. I will add a soft side, um, and Colleen's probably laughing for me to say this, but I'll add a soft side of that is, you know, having a connected community means that, um, you, one way or the other, we're the next, uh, year or so, I mean, you're going to know your neighbors a lot better than you've known them for a long time. Uh, I sure do. Over the last six months, I've spent more time at home and working from home, walking around my neighborhood and things like that. Being a connected community means understanding and having empathy for all that's going on in everybody else's life. Is there's ways to continue to bring the community together? I think that, uh, that, the kind of culture that can be built through this, I would just add that, um, kind of squishy part of connectivity to the hard wires and the infrastructure.
Well, thanks for that, Kenny. If there are any other, other questions, comments, we can move forward and some other things in our agenda, but thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate all that you do and you're certainly great benefactors of your hard work. And if certainly if there's anything we can help to do, participate, we're certainly at the ready to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further on that? We'll move on to our Dublin 2035 framework discussion. Thanks, Kenny. Okay, um, I see Jenny Roush's face. She must be the planning staff presentation coordinator. So hello, Jenny, welcome. Thank you for being with us tonight. If you want to go ahead and, and begin the framework discussion, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Good evening, Kathy. I don't know if you had any, you wanted to start us off at all? If not, I'm happy to dive into the discussion.
Maybe I'll just make a couple of quick comments if that makes sense for everybody. And then, um, thank you very much, Jenny. Behind the scenes, as you know, over the last little while, Jenny and Homer and the team have been putting together materials for us to help us kickstart it. And our goal tonight is to really get this off the starting blocks because we have been delayed, right? For all the reasons that we know, um, and to put this forward. So that's the goal of this evening is, is if we, if we finish this in an, in an hour or forty-five minute, wherever we are on this, if we can say, okay, are we feeling ready now that we can really get this moving? I, I'm hopeful that that's what, what we can do. And then, as Jenny will share, um, the real work will obviously get moving forward. But the goal is, you know, how, how do we do that and how do we get off the blocks? The, the other thing, um, and it's just so important, I guess, that we had Kenny's update. So thanks to the team for doing that as we get started, that we probably want to challenge ourselves to think about how we do this differently, just like everybody else's. So during the course of this evening, the straw man that was put out as a straw man, and let's, let's really beat it up. If it's, this isn't the, the best way to, to put this forward, let's just talk about that now. And we can certainly go down some different paths. So with that as a bit of a backdrop, I'll turn it over to Jenny. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. Thanks for the, the good intro too. So like I said, I'm happy to be here tonight and talk about this exciting adventure that we're about to embark on, or at least as we proposed and as Vice Mayor DeRosa said, really want to get your input to make sure we're on the right path. So, um, I'm going to give a brief overview sort of of the memo that we provided to you all back in June, just to give you some background. And then we really want to get into sort of the pieces and parts and really hear from you and, and get some details about how to, how to proceed, if that's what you all want to do. So in the memo, we outlined, um, and as I'm sure you'll recall, we did an audit back in November of last year regarding the current community plan and the updates that have been made over the past six years since that was last updated and adopted. But also then outlining what would be necessary to move forward to update that. And council provided feedback at that point and affirmed that initial process that we would move forward here in the next year or two to sort of undertake that, which was perfectly timed, um, in hindsight with your council goal-setting discussion and talking a lot about how, how we want to proceed, how we want to move forward, housing, you know, aging in place, all of mobility, connectivity, all of council's goals. Um, and really each of those things culminating in you all coming up with, you know, this new goal and idea of the Dublin 2035 framework. Um, and as Vice Mayor DeRosa alluded to, after that meeting, we had some internal discussions with staff to look at how to tackle these and bring that forward to you all in a way that is cohesive. Because as we began looking at this and we provided some examples and then Council member Fox provided an example today too, really looking at the community plan and the 2035 framework are one in the same. And our conclusion was that that was going to be the best way to tackle that because these, each of these pieces look at that long-term comprehensive vision of the city and how we're guiding and developing and focusing our energies and our council goals. So that, we really came to that conclusion, um, pretty early on in this discussion that these were one in the same. And looked at then having sort of came to that conclusion, how are we going to dissect this in a way that's manageable? Because there's a lot of pieces and parts and it involves pretty much every division department within the city, including council and the community. So how do we fit all that together and look at these, these pieces? So as part of that, um, and Homer has some graphics, which maybe he could share at this point, that show how we would suggest to dissect these into four major themes. So you'll see in the center, which sort of is the main, the main sort of central nucleus of all of this, which is the Dublin 2035 framework, which is really the vision, goals, principles that guide everything, which could include history of Dublin, the foundations, community character, diversity, equity and inclusion, demographics. So all of those sort of building blocks that are within the existing community plan and then building upon those and including that within sort of that overall vision. And then from there, they get dissected out into these four major themes. So the goal here is to take the existing community plan and the chapters and the information included in each of those and put these into these four major themes, which, again, we can talk a little further after I get through with the overview part about, you know, having staff liaisons assigned to them and then the potential for council committees to be engaged in each of those and tackling that. Because again, it's a really comprehensive project and we want to make sure that we're including everyone and, and being able to do this in a manageable way. So the four themes then that come out of that are the quality of life section. So that's the red that's in the upper left-hand corner, which would include safety, engagement, leisure, land of facilities, culture, and then resiliency and sustainability. So again, some of these items are touched on in the community plan, but other ones are things that you all have talked about and staff has talked about and focused on over the years and trying to incorporate some of these other pieces and parts. And you'll see within each of these theme, within the, at the bottom of each box is sort of the vision, data metrics piece. So that would, that means then, and I'll go through each of these other three, but that each one, each of these themes has its own sort of vision statement, objectives and for implementation, as well as then measurements to make sure that we're meeting those expectations and making sure that we're implementing this. So again, keeping that in mind and we can talk through what that looks like as we go forward. Then the second across the top is land use. So looking at housing, aesthetics, development, the special area plans that are associated with throughout the city that are included in the current community plan and then growth. Then the yellow would be infrastructure, so transportation, utilities, smart cities, mobility, parking, connected Dublin. So all those pieces that make up our infrastructure components, um, from anything to, you know, data to transportation. And then last but not least, um, is economics, which ties in really nicely with tonight's conversation. But what is the, you know, overall fiscal health of the city? What, how do those strategies align with economic development? The future of work, which this year has shown us that that is, you know, dramatically different. So how are we account, excuse me, accounting for that? And then education, which is also something we discussed at great length, um, at your goal setting as well. So really looking at those and how those then you'll sort of see at the bottom, how does that fit in with our overall strategic plan, you know, for the city and, and the services provided in our daily operations? So all these things fit together in one cohesive piece. So, um, you want to flip to maybe then the next one, Homer? The, so in order to look at this in a way, as I mentioned before, how to dissect this into some manageable bites, we came up with a process map for your consideration. So obviously tonight, we're that second box on the left, we're kicking off this conversation, wanting to get your input and looking how to move forward. Our next, um, step in this map following tonight's direction would be to look at scheduling a speaker series. So this next bigger section is this education, inclusion and feedback. So we really want to start educating ourselves, understanding what the community wants, what council wants, boards and commissions, um, and then doing some of that initial technical background work. So the speaker series, facilitated sessions, um, and this technical, you know, whether it's updating demographics or doing some inventories, so getting all of our data pieces and parts together that helps us be educated and provide some feedback, um, you all and to staff to understand how we would develop this further, which then would lead us into that next phase, which is on the far right side, so that sort of project planning, which would include the greater scope of this, how we execute this and the budget, because there's obviously budget implications for this. Um, and then really at that point, diving into that really detailed work that gets at those four coded boxes defined by our, our vision and our goals. So again, that's a quick overview of where we came from tonight, as I mentioned, and as did Vice Mayor DeRosa, really want to get your feedback about the process map, your expectations for next steps. And I think maybe more importantly, on the previous slide is what, what else should we be considering? What should we be including? What are we, we think we've captured, um, again, in these sort of bigger buckets, what, what you've all been talking about, but what are some things that either we're not considering or, as, as you mentioned, other avenues that we should be, be looking at? Just to make sure we're all on the same page. So at this point, I'm happy to open it up. Again, I don't know, um, Kathy, if you had anything else you wanted to, to talk through or I can highlight further?
The, the only thing that I might add is then this particular chart, you see, you see a fair number of staff names that Dana and staff have worked on assigning to these particular areas of focus, or if they stay as, as outlined. One of the things I know council really wanted was to have this be an interactive session where we participated, at least at strategy level, um, with the groups. So the other thing that we discussed and I reached out and everybody shared with me sort of their areas of interest, and quite luckily, and maybe conveniently, they seem to align fairly nicely with our current commissions. So instead of creating another group, the thought would be to have certain of our, our, our committee work, rather not commissions, rather committee work aligned with this. So the thinking, and I'll put this out here for a straw man for us to think, under quality of life, the thinking was that would be admin committee work. Under land use, that would be community development work. Under economics, this is a shocker, that'd be the finance committee work. And then that would leave for infrastructure, public service. And we could certainly change those, but I'll put those out as straw, straw men. So what we have here then would be the set of staff that folks would work with and how we as council would, if you will, divide that work. That's the only thing I might add before we move into pieces and parts. So back to you. Thank you, Jenny.
Sure. Does anybody have any initial questions or clarification?
I do, um, on the process, so the next slide. So, um, I'm good with the first two boxes. Those are the easy ones. Then we get the speaker series. And. And I guess the first question I have is what would be the format in which those would occur? So you invite somebody in to speak. Is it a council meeting? Is it a work session? What would that look like?
Well, again, the speaker series is meant to be, and I guess maybe I didn't clarify that very well, is really community engagement as well. So it would not, it would be open to the public so that there would be an opportunity for everyone to hear that. Again, given our current status and virtual platforms for many things, I would anticipate a number of these would be in a virtual format, just because we can't have large groups gathering. So whether that is someone that comes to us virtually or there are pre-recorded sessions that are applicable, this may also, we had some discussions internally that maybe some of these topics dovetail into you know, our diversity, inclusion, task force that's coming out of that. Again, not all of them, but some of them are really relevant. So how to maybe tie those pieces together and use, you know, similar topics to help address that. So again, we're going to be real creative here because we really can't be having everybody together in a, in a format that we typically would. So it's going to be challenging, but a really great opportunity to test some of these new technologies and opportunities.
Perfect. Because my next question was going to be which comes first, sort of the cart or the horse? Do we have public input and input from some of these experts? Or does council and the, and staff start heading down this road based on what we think? What did we envision with this 2035? I like your, I totally agree with the way you've arranged this now that I understand it. Because I think we should really start with the experts and public comment as opposed to getting too far down the line and then inviting their feedback and finding we're on the wrong path. So perfect. That's it for me.
Yeah, I mean, that really was our intent to sort of, as you said, sort of lay out some of these best practices or things to be considering. And then again, whether it's individual meetings, you know, with council, whether it's boards and commissions, whether they, and the community, whether that's a, you know, group discussion. And again, I anticipate there being several venues and topics of discussion, because we agree, we want to make sure that we are aligning and that council is, you know, getting direction from the community about how to proceed. We have that very similar intent. And the sort of technical, so that blue box on the bottom, the technical fact-based piece is really, we have to do demographic updates and the census information is going to help us with that and inventories, we can do that, we have to have that information anyway. So that helps also then inform us how to move forward and what those things look like. So we would really, as you said, save then that next sort of project planning scope piece to once we've educated ourselves, been informed. And then my anticipation would, that really dark blue box, we would be back at council to say, here's what we've heard, here's the direction we think we're going in and affirming that that's what you all agree with and you have heard as well. So we intend this to be a very iterative process.
So I, I can't hand raise. So I don't know if I can talk next, but you know, I, you know, in trying to kind of look to see what the American Planning Association suggests on how to go about creating your community plan or reviewing it or updating it. As I looked at this, all I could think about was so much more work for our staff to try to do this. And I, I wonder if we can't just, you know, think outside the box a little bit. The, the link that I sent about Plano, Texas, I thought was kind of interesting. They had an advisory task force that sort of was the, the little engine that, that made sure this ran. And, and I don't exactly know what that task force is made up of, because I couldn't really figure it out that quickly. But I think it might be interesting to just kind of think about lifting some of this off the backs of our staff and council too, and utilizing a task force to think about how we go about beginning, you know, this work. And also what they did is, and this might be the perfect time because of COVID, is they, they reached out to the community with surveys, postcards, surveys and utility statements. They had things set up in the rec center where you could make comments. They had posters in the library, they had, they just flushed the community with survey questions about these very topics. And the advisory committee then brought that all back and then started their speaker series, their facilitated sessions. They kind of brought together all the opinions of the community to then begin the conversation. And I'm just wondering with the timing of all of this, maybe that would be an approach. So that we have our hands full right now at staff level, just trying to get the city's work done. And the advantage of having an advisory task force is that you could pick a diverse group of people, business, youth, education, all elements, you know, natural resource person, all of the sustainability, a chairman from our advisory group, you could put them all together to try to then begin to start the process. I, I would just throw that out as a, as maybe another option in the, in way, in ways to approach this.
Mayor, I don't know if I, would it be okay if I commented?
Sure.
Please do.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I'd like to thank Councilmember Fox for that suggestion and I appreciate, I appreciate that offer of the task force. I, I think the one thing though, that I would just suggest is that no way lighten staff's load any. And it's, and I'm all about that. I, I do think that the primary and significant effort of this sort of undertaking, just like the generations of these we've done previously as a city, is all about engagement with the public. And, you know, I would think that maybe, you know, the way to lighten that load, so to speak, which I appreciate the thought, believe me, could be in those early phases. And I agree that, you know, maybe surveying and the like is, is, is a great thought. You know, the use of consultants and the like, the city's done in the past with community plans. I mean, you know, when we talked about this earlier about trying to mod, trying to update the community plan, you know, we were trying to sort of pick pieces and parts. So it didn't become quite the heavy lift that a former total community plan was, which took several years and a couple million dollars to do. And we were trying to, to update. And now we're trying, trying to be as strategic as we can with 2035, which is absolutely the right thing to do for the community. But I do appreciate the thought of maybe a comprehensive survey or something. I'm not so sure about and it's not really for me to decide, but you know, I want to involve the community in any way, every way we can. Maybe a task force or something come up later or down the road, if you do some early on engagement like you're suggesting with a survey. So if you wanted to spend dollars to, to really do a heavy survey lift, I, I would agree that now's the time, probably between now, the end of the year, first of the year, to get that piece done and try to cover as many topics as you can as part of this and incorporate that in your next year's budget. Just, just a quick reaction to that. I love some of those ideas, but it never really lightens staff's load on that, for what that's worth.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I, I think, yeah, and that's trying to do. I would encourage all of you just to take a look at that, that Plano, Texas plan. It's, it's really unusual. It won an A, American Plan Association Award for all of the elements that it has in it. I'm not saying that we copy it, but, but I think that we can, we can pull some really good ideas out of it, especially when it comes to the way they surveyed the citizenry without having to bring them together. It was easy. They used social media, they used mail-in, they used at, at the source responses, that sort of thing. And it gave them a lot of food for thought and it moved them forward pretty quickly, I think, although this plan did take them a little while, but, but, but I, I think it has a lot of good food in it. So. And then I have a few other things, but I'll, I'll, I'll yield to my fellow council members right now.
Real, real quick, Jane, that Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau, I would, I don't know if it was a survey, but came out last fall or around November. That would be a really valuable piece to use, because it's more or less a survey and shows us what we're strong in and what we're weak in. I don't remember if it addressed what the public shows us what they value. I don't remember if it showed what they wanted us to improve on, but.
Right, Andy? I'm not sure either, but it's good to look at.
You know, Jane, I sort of like the Plano project because of its concise breakdown of what you're chasing is broken down to built environment, social environment, natural environment, economic environment and regionalism. And then I like the three or four sub-chapters to each one of those. And maybe if you're doing a survey, that might be a good way to get it out and get it in a concise way where we're not sort of covering the entire scope of our community in a broad way. And that would help people maybe get more focused on any comments they might have that are beneficial.
Right.
I really liked the plan. I thought they did a good job with it. Thanks for getting it out.
Yeah, the, the nice thing about it, John, what I liked about it is not only did they, did they get the survey out early and got a lot of response back, but if you dig a little deeper into their site, you can actually continue to give opinions on the community plan in real time. And you can, you can watch to see how like the, a planning commission or an ARB utilizes the plan in real time and then comment on it. And it becomes even more food to, to feed a future community plan. It's really an interesting interactive site. It, it gives you the chance to talk about what you want, act on what you're doing and make suggestions on how you can make it better. It's kind of a cool little site.
Yeah, I liked how it also had that, you know, being able to provide and direction or comments to council about what to prioritize and what, and from a community perspective, I thought that was, and again, as an ongoing piece, that's, that's an interesting idea, because again, you don't want it to be sitting on the shelf. We've talked about that a lot, is how do you use this on a daily basis? And that, that's a really interesting way to do that.
Right.
Good question. Do you want me to leave this display up or you want me to take it down?
Well, I guess, does anybody else have any questions about this particular graphic? If not, I would like some discussion, if you're all willing to, on the, yeah, on the previous slide with the topics.
I know Greg hit his hand up. I don't know if people can see that. So.
Sorry.
Yeah, thanks Kathy. Just a couple of quick comments. Yeah, it's really amazing that this community is, is as successful as it already is, is trying to stay leaning forward on all these issues and continue to update. So I would just be careful not to bite off more than we can chew. I think we need to focus in on the areas that we actually think need improvement as opposed to just sort of revisiting all the stuff we've already done. And, and another comment, that would be really interesting. I was going to ask Kenny about this, but I, I didn't speak up quickly enough. And I know we have independent school system, of course. I'm wondering what vocational training and those kinds of alternatives to the traditional college education, if there's a place for that in that education box. I think that that vocational training, the skilled trades and things like that also plays into that diversified community and reaching out to other segments. And I know as we as a city that don't necessarily directly make, you know, have decision-making abilities with tools and things like that. But you take, talk to a guy like Pageboard Brock about vocational training and, and he thinks that this is a huge missing piece of our community. So I think we should just remember, keep that in mind when the education conversation comes up, that those alternatives to the traditional education might be something we want to look into.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, we did discuss that, I think, as part of your, of your retreat as well, with this education and what the future of that looks like. I do recall us talking about that. So that's a great, great point. And you also bring up a good point of not reinventing the wheel of things that we already know about. So that is also part of this. And that was part of that initial audit back in November is there's a lot of things we have been updating and doing area plans. So I don't think the intent would be to be looking at every single area plan and redoing those. It's really targeting the ones, finishing ones that are partially done. We're waiting for recommendations to come out of the Historic Dublin Task Force, which we assume is going to be an area plan for that. But waiting to see what their recommendations are and how that plays out. The Southwest area is always an area that we talk about. So again, I think really looking at focusing on, as you said, focusing on the parts that need to be updated and not redoing everything. Because it's, large portions of this are really, are working very well. It's how do we use this and implement this further as we go forward?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's all right, Kath, go.
What, one of the things that I, I think is interesting back to, you know, not reinventing the wheel is on the diagram of the, each of the four sections to really focus on the principle or what is the vision and what are the metrics? So, you know, when you can spend some time, Greg, to your point, it can articulate, this is what we're trying to accomplish. And this is how we'll know if we've done it. Can really say, you know what, we're feeling pretty good about X, Y and Z, because this is what we're trying to accomplish. And here's some metrics that help us and would help in the future. So on some of these, you know, wrestling down that how do we know when we've arrived or getting close or way off base was one of the things on that diagram, we thought, you know, that's going to be pretty important. Because to your point, we can spend an awful lot of time moving that needle, very small amount. But if we spend some time on those metrics and articulation, then it really helps us focus. So I, I think that's a hugely important point. Thank you.
You know, I, I'd like to kind of make a couple of suggestions. It struck me on the, on the, the gray cloud box that the four, the four guiding vision and goals. I don't feel, from, to me, I don't, I don't feel like they're, they're very general, they're overreaching, and we certainly have to think about every one of them, but I don't see how the others come out of it. Just that, like diversity, equity and inclusion, and then underneath that comes, well, it does, land use, infrastructure. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't look at that and maybe think about expanding somehow. Demographics and community character, history and foundations. I can see where they fit in, but I'm wondering if they're the overall umbrella, the way we want us, the way we want to present them. And I haven't given this a lot of thought, because I, you know, I really just took a look at this in the last few days. But I, I would like to, I'd like to think about that piece a little bit more, just to be sure that we've captured exactly what we want, our overreaching visionary goals and to, to look like. And then additionally, I, I agree with Greg, this education piece is really important. And I can, I can see that we should fit it in, not only in the economic piece, how we can create education that would drive our economy, but also how we can include education that would improve our quality of life. I'd like to see it in both places, because lifelong learning improves your quality of life. And there's opportunities there, even as simple as having a fiddle lessons at the Irish Festival is a, a learning opportunity that improves quality of life, but it wouldn't fit under economics. So I think that we have to think about it in both ways. And then under land use, I'd like to see this piece about growth, responsible growth management. I'd like to see it titled in some way like that, because there's growth that's not healthy. And you take it just because it's coming. And then there's responsible growth management, which is controlled, monitored and enhanced, enhances your community's life. So I, I'd like to kind of look at that, that way. Under infrastructure, I'd like to add communication. I would like to see us have a better communication infrastructure. And I mean, that's in technology. I think we've talked about that in the way we utilize our website to create communication. But there's other ways that we can reach out and communicate, not only with our citizens, but with our businesses, regionally, with our state. I, I would like to see us look at some really unique and innovative ways to be connected in, in the way of communicating that makes us exemplary. And we might need technology to do that, and that might be in infrastructure. The only other thing I was thinking under quality of life, and we do have aesthetics under land use, but I think, I think the use of design is important in quality of life. The, the way you design your greenways, the way you design your streets, the way you design your, your buildings or your place-making opportunities. And John, you, you know this better than anybody, because you know, Dublin's aesthetic and design in its naturalness is, has become like the standard for everybody. you know, Dublin's aesthetic and design in its naturalness is, has become like the standard for everybody else. And so if you leave that out of quality of life and you forget about it, then every boarding commission, every ARB, everybody who has to do this, forgets about it, right? And then under quality of life, I'd also like to see, uh, natural resources and historic and cultural resources. Because I also think that they play, uh, a very large part in creating a foundational sense of loyalty and belonging in a community. And I think they're important to always, to make sure that under land and facilities, we call them out. So those are initial thoughts.
I have a question for you. How is, how, how is communication and engagement di- different? Um, why would, why would one go under, why would communication go, are talking about, cause you mentioned communication under infrastructure.
Right, I did.
Is that the, the physical ability to communicate?
Yes, yeah.
Case, then how is that different? How does that differ? Like, how is that a completely separate square from connected Dublin? Cause isn't the connected Dublin, the whole part about being able to communicate? And maybe this is just a matter of semantics, it might be.
It could be. I, I think one of the things that we constantly seem to struggle with, and we're seeing it now, even when we survey, we're using Nextdoor. We're not even using our own infrastructure to communicate with our citizens. And we're using like Zen City, we're hiring someone to tell us what the mood of our citizens is. There's nothing wrong with that, but we don't have any other infrastructure. Wouldn't it be nice if we could simply communicate with our citizens through our own, our own, uh, tech, municipal technology in a way that we could get real-time opinions? Or, you know what I'm saying? And, and I kind of think that's the infrastructure I'm talking about.
Yeah, no, I totally get it. And I, I mean, I think you're right. I'm not, I'm not, again, this may be just a matter of semantics. Um, I just, I also don't want to see us adding 15 different sticky notes to each one of these because
Yeah.
Using different words meaning the same thing.
Right, right.
I do see communication certainly as being a physical infrastructure piece, like you're talking about, as well as an engagement piece. Um, so maybe that's folded into those sticky notes a little bit.
Yeah.
I think you're right about history and culture. I think we could kind of put those two maybe together, um, rather than, than separately. Cause I, I agree with you. I think his, history was one of the things I noted was, I think I put historic, I don't remember what I put. Um, but history was basically one of the things I had listed that I thought should be on here as well. So I totally agree with you there, but I wonder if that can go hand in hand with culture.
Oh, I think it could. I think you can call it historical and cultural resources.
I love that.
They're all underneath there. Cause I, I've always said, and I do believe this. I think not only are the buildings important, but I think, I think the riverfront is important. I think the stone walls are important, topography is important. The ravine is important, and those are, those are historical and cultural resources.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think the only other comment that I would have to make is I think I, I like the idea of folding these in with our committees. I mean, I love you all, I really do, but, um, we do definitely meet a lot. And as much as I love meeting with you all, although I might rather do it in person, um, I, I do think we could put these under those, um, headings of, of the committees. Um, because I do think that our committee work that we do in general, even the stuff that we have to do every year is important. But it's always fun when you can do additional things on top of the stuff that you do every year, right? Um, and I think particularly committees like admin committee and finance committee tend to do a lot of the same things every year. And so I think it'd be, and actually that we all have our things we have to do every year in our committees. So I think it would be a really good idea to, to put these under the headings of the committees. That's just my two cents on that. Thank you for the discussion, Jane. I really appreciate it.
I, I would just like to interject. I agree a bit with Greg. You know, I wonder if we don't have a survey on where we are with many of these topics and maybe give ourselves a grade. You know, that, that this is on a scale of one to 10. Feel like this, this particular might be a one, needs a lot of work, and some of them might be nines. Because I, I don't know how many of you have been involved in a community plan update. Really, I think Greg and John probably, Greg, were you around for the last community plan? That was, uh, that was an all-consuming event. And, um, I don't think in, in this market right now, we don't want to be all consumed by something like this. Uh, there are a lot of other things that deserve a lot of our time and attention. Not that this does not, because this does. But if we maybe gave ourselves some grades on where we were with these things, much like we would with the, um, an overlay of the community plan, right? We have something specific and, and area or something that we're, that is pressing. And we deal with them most pressing, least pressing, you know, it's kind of like eating the elephant. So, you know, before we start a really broad speaker series, I'd like us to hone in on, you know, I don't, where's the bleeding? That sounds way too dramatic. But, you know, but what do we want to shut off for, you know, what, what is most desperate need of attention? So I would be in a favor of staff looking at and evaluating those things and saying, these are from, for most the least problematic. This is, would be a progression to work through these rather than just dividing them up by committees randomly and then dealing with things that may or may not be pressing.
Yeah, I'm all for that. I think that's a, an excellent idea.
So. You said it better than I did, Chris. It's a, if we came up with a prioritization, you know, that way we're not dismissing the bottom priorities. We're just saying that we live in a world of limited resources, limited time, limited energy and all of that. Maybe we just prioritize the areas we think we most desperately, don't desperately, most need, um, perhaps a change or addition.
You know, and I think, uh, staff really has a handle on this. Um, having served on the, I think the 98 community developed the community plan and it ran for two years and it was just intensive and the meetings were constant. And then architectural, we had another one lasted over two years. And I think staff can help point us to just what you all said, Chris and, and Greg. You know, these are the things that we should be focusing on. These are the things we have the most problems with. The shotgun approach is pretty broad and, uh, I think the hard work that you have done in the past councils have narrowed down important, uh, aspects of our city. And I think staff can help us point those out. And also the citizens can, and we can interject that too. But this is a huge project. If you try to eat the entire sausage in, um, a year, it just, it's just colossal. When you get into the minutia of a community plan and you're meeting two or three times a month and maybe more, it's a huge amount of work. And just that alone went on for two years and so did a lot of the other committees we've served on. So all those suggestions you just said, I totally agree with just based on 20 years of being here. So you're right on.
Did everyone get that? John just agreed with me. Can we just celebrate that for a second?
Hey, Chris, this is my birthday last week. This is a gift.
Feeling very generous for his own birthday.
He's a giver, he's a giver. My thanks, John, I, I agree.
Would it make then sense for maybe the initial meeting for each of these fours, for the, the, uh, work groups, the committees, to do that work with staff, say, in my bucket of land, whatever, what are those priorities? You know, really say, um, cause I'm trying to figure out how we get from here to there. Um, really say, okay, if all of these things along with, with staff's work, that could be a very good way to kick it off and prioritize it and say why you feel that way. That could be one way to accomplish that, that work. And then, you know, begin to direct the speaker series, et cetera, around that. Is that a, is that a doable thing?
I think that's a, I think that's certainly a, a good way to start. I would like to see us put out some kind of a survey to get some kind of a feedback. And I don't think it would be difficult. And I also think you could probably, uh, mine the Plano survey. It, it's, you know, they actually did it on a scale of one to 10. And, um, they asked some simple questions. They're all the same questions we're all asking. Every community plan's the same. Um, and there might be an easy way to get it out there. I'm not sure. But, um, but I, but if you do that hand in hand with, you know, um, our committee work and then you have some community input. And then I, I also like, um, Andy's idea of utilizing the Convention Visors bureaus. Uh, that was quite a survey that has quite a lot of stuff in it that would, that might lead us in a direction. And then you summarize all of that. And I think it would get you at least on a starting point of where the priorities might be.
Yeah, and I think that, that coupled with, we already did that initial audit. So taking that may be the next step further of here's where we think we are. Again, we don't, I think from a staff perspective, don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. But right, taking those, the public comments, your direction, previous survey results, and putting those pieces together and then taking those to the committees. I think that would, that could definitely help get us in the right direction.
So I'm, I'm interested to hear your thoughts, um, all of your thoughts. Cause I don't, I don't really know the answer. But, um, we've got this public input, uh, concept and the timing of that. We've got the notion that we might prioritize, let's say in economic, we've got four different categories. Um, prioritize those, which is most important that we attack immediately. But we've also got, we've got the guiding vision and goals that I would think we'd want to work on first. Cause it seems to me that everything else kind of points to that. So we kind of need to know what that guiding vision and goals are first. And then we need to establish the vision for each category, like economic, what is the vision? Do we use the public's feedback to create the guiding vision and goals and the vision for each section? Or do we, do we do that?
I would think we would use that, again, our current status, but that input from, from the public to help guide those and create those. Because again, it's the community plan. So we would, and so again, I guess maybe where you're going is that education, inclusion, feedback section. I think maybe there's some rearranging of what's happening first, I guess, in terms of the facilitated sessions and the input to then help, help guide and create that, those vision and goals. Is that, is that what you're?
Kind of what I'm asking, I, you know, to me, you sort of need to know, I guess, do we want to ask the question, what does everybody want? And what is, what do the residents feel we need to be working on first? Um, do we use that input to create the framework? I, I, I guess, I have a hard time figuring out where to start. And I think that's what we're all trying to figure out. As I said, I can easily pick the things that I think we're lacking in. But is that, should that be the first step? Or should the defining vision for each section um, be the first step? Or could you make the argument, the vision in each section really doesn't, don't spend a lot of time on the vision. If you know there's something that needs to be fixed, fix it. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, to me, I think that center part, if you're asking, I guess, from a staff perspective, to me, that sort of gray cloud in the middle that ties it all together, that to me is the most important thing to get the community buy-in on because that does define how we're focusing and defining the vision for each of these various themes. So I think that's where we would, my recommendation would be to start with that of taking all of your guidance and recommendations, taking that out to the public and getting their input and bringing that back with our recommendations and prioritized list. And then at each committee, defining, defining that. So I think there's, I think we would do that. That would be my recommendation. What do y'all think of that?
You know, I, I, I get and I value the idea of community input, no, no question. And, and the, the communication effort to do that and to get feedback is, is extremely important and very valuable. It does have a, you do reach a point where it has its limitations. Not everybody responds to, um, surveys and doesn't take times to log on and answer questions and to give all of that kind of feedback. So that's one thing that you don't, you don't know that you are necessarily representing all of the community and the different questions and the feedback that you're getting. Um, that's one thing. And then the second thing is we, I think, have an obligation, I think this is our role as a council, to consider all of the different demands of the community. For example, if we put out a survey asking the swim team parents, do you want more swimming opportunities? They would say absolutely, that's the most important thing in our community. Our job is to take all of the competing interests and we do have limited resources, um, and limited land to use and all of those things. And so we have an obligation to try to see the bigger picture and to account for all of this stuff. And, and I don't know that we need to reinvent the wheel because I have a tremendous amount of respect for all of my fellow council members and, and our staff as well. We already do a pretty good job. I think it, I mean, when our, uh, citizen satisfaction survey response was 96% or whatever, said that this is a great or fantastic place to live, there's something that's being done right. And so I don't want to sort of lose all of that ground. I do think feedback is important. I do think input is important. And public, uh, surveys and all that have a role and they are important. But I think that we, they do have, at some point, they do reach a limitation. Um, it doesn't represent everybody and we need to be the ones that are balancing all of the various competing interests for the resources our community has.
Greg. Okay, so we are running, we are, we, we, we're just about 10 minutes to eight o'clock. So, pardon me?
I get to stay because, uh, the, the theater production got rained out.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
On for a few more minutes.
Glad to have you. Yeah. Yeah. So I, I'm just trying to, as I started at this saying, our, our goal is to step into the, to the, to the great unknown here. The one thing we do know is once we get moving, it'll crystallize and will change. That we do know. And we have heard from everybody, we want to prioritize, et cetera, so forth. So in the next 10 minutes or so, maybe if there are the things that folks are really uncomfortable with, we'll share that and then see if we can't figure out how to, how to take that first step, step forward here and, um, and take this feedback. And I, you know, gladly give that work to staff, to Jenny, to help, to help us do that. So other big things and then chances are we will step forward and then we'll, we'll back up and cover something and, and that kind of stuff. Other big ideas, thoughts, concerns?
The only thing I would mention is, as I did before, I think that the gray box, if, if that is the most important, let's make sure that we have the, the, uh, that framework uh, the way we, we really need to. And I think that might require looking at maybe at some others and making sure that we, we capture really what we want. I, I just have some hesitancy about, about the, the titles there, but that doesn't make it wrong. I'm just, I'd like to just look at that a little bit stronger.
And I'd just like to say that, uh, I think we, uh, this is a huge thing, it's like a comprehensive plan again for the city. And Dublin has always prided itself in the fact that we're always planning five to 10 years ahead. But I think, um, to be effective, as big as this is and, and as wide the scope, I think it's important that, um, us, we and the, um, staff sort of zoom in on what's really important and can be improved. I think what Greg said is true. There's so much going on here that's right. And all of you have said it, you know, in our own community, we normally have 2,400 houses, um, 30 houses for sale. And right now I think there's six on the market. I think people realize what a good job you've done, what a good job Dublin's done in the past, the staff, the planning. And, um, you know, this is more of a tweaking exercise and maybe a long-term, um, planning exercise. But it's just so big that, you know, as I said, if you served on any of these committees and you got down in the weeds, and we did, it's, it's two years of just going through minutia to make this thing work perfectly. And, you know, with this one-year timeframe on this thing, and as big as the scope is, I, I just don't see it. So I think my focus would be to try to focus on and tweaking and listening to you, listening to the staff members and saying, okay, this is what we got to do to improve this. Uh, also Jane, your comment on design, I do agree with that too. That's, uh, design and planning is what makes our city exceptional. And it's a really important aspect of when you come into the community, what you see, how you feel about the community. And again, it's our staff putting out the flowers, the street alignments, the, what we do with all the different zonings. And, and it's really an important characteristic of, you know, where do I want to move? New Albany, Arlington, Dublin, Worthington, Westerville? And I think that's what really draws people in here. I had, uh, met three young people. I had met three young people who all just moved over to Dublin from Worthington, because they said, you know, this is an awesome city, had no idea about all the pools and all bicycle trails and everything going on. So we have set the standard, I think, for long-range and good planning. So this is more, should be a exercise in improving that, try to get great ideas squashed out and refine them. So that's, that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
I have to just say one more thing that I think is really important, because you, you bring this up. After serving on ARB and on planning and zoning and just being a citizen commission member, if we don't do anything else, this plan needs to be utilized and used by all of our commissions and our council members. This shouldn't be a plan that we do and we put on the shelf, or that we just put on the website and no one ever looks at it again. The plan needs to be, have real-life energy to it and drive everything we do all the time. Otherwise, we shouldn't even bother to be doing this, you know? And I think that's where maybe in the past, we, we've gotten, I don't want to say lazy about it, everybody knows the plan exists, but there's so much to the plan, this is on the web, that it's very difficult to capture it and then actually implement it day-to-day. Staff does it, but I think that we might have a breakdown when it comes to that communication between council and commissions actually putting the plan into, into effect. So I would really like to see that be a, a major end game here. And now that's, thank you.
Okay, are, are, are we, I think maybe we're getting close to done on that topic. Jenny's nodding yes, other people are nodding yes, other thoughts? And obviously, we got lots of time to, to keep refining and prioritizing.
Great. Thank you all very much for your discussion, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we have fifteen years, so we have to have this thing finished, so. I, I'm teasing, I, I don't expect, I wouldn't want it to last more than fifteen months, but it is a long-term plan and whatever the plans that we set at this point in time, one thing we do know is that we will change them, because conditions will change and everything else. So I, I think, I think that's why we call it a vision and not a picture. Because our vision can be consistent, but the picture that we all have when we close our eyes and imagine what 2035 would look like, a certain destiny change. So, thanks Kathy and Jenny for bringing that forward. I, I have a question really, because on the agenda that Anne sent me doesn't have a CIP discussion associated with it. There was lots of CIP items in Board Pack that I was reading through.
Yeah, Dana, I think it was just for distribution. Dana can speak to that.
Dana, what, what sort of things have we not accomplished that we, we all and you had hoped that we might tonight?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to Matt Stifler a little bit on that, but our focus was to make sure you knew that we got information out on the CIP to you, and that is our suggested CIP that we're leaning towards. That was available to you in Board Pack. We also have a hard copy available for you to pick up at City Hall if you can swing by, if you prefer that version of it, and the idea there is to take a look at the comprehensive proposed CIP for the next five years that staff has assembled and take a look at that. If you can, give us any thoughts on anything that we may be missing out on or that you may have ideas on. You might recall in the years past, we've given you that opportunity as you've gone into your recess for the summer, we did not get that to you this year on that timeframe, but kind of picking up where we left off and getting you that in your hands to take a look at, and then we'll start briefing you up on that in, in upcoming meetings. Matt, was there anything you were, you were planning to go over in more detail?
No, Dana, thank you, you summarized it well. I just wanted to be clear that included is the staff requested CIP items, so it includes all staff requests. And we'll make some decisions from there and present that to you the next Monday for the next three weeks.
Could we take the CIP stuff, though, out of the council workshop agenda area and put it in its own, so that it's much easier to find?
You know, Christina, we can do that and put it in both places. Maybe, yeah, we've got a couple of places we can put it, we just did that today, I think.
Okay, cool, though, though it could, it's just easier, kind of it's on it's up.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great, thanks, yeah, maybe under our library somewhere, we could have a CIP tab to, or in the library, maybe all those documents could be housed there.
Right.
Okay, um, is there anything that I'm missing before we go to executive session? Everybody got the executive session link and registered for that, so we all know how to get there. I do want to let the public know that we will not take any action following the executive session. We will reconvene this meeting following next executive session, but only for the purposes to formally adjourn. So, all right, well then I would like to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session to consider the employment of a public employee, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Christina. Anne, would you please call roll?
Sure, Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Speaker DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo. Sorry, Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And your amorous grooms.
Yes. Okay, I will see you all virtually here in executive session and then we will come back here to adjourn.
Thanks.
Please go ahead and just end or choose to leave the meeting.
I know I had a little bit of trouble getting back in. Christina texted and she was trying to get back in, so I'm sure Maria's trying to... there's Christina.
I'm here. Hello everyone. I had to unlock the room and I'm bringing you all back in. So once you have everybody, I'm going to try to keep track, but if you can keep track as well and tell me when I've got everybody and then we can begin. And just a reminder, we are streaming right now.
All we're waiting for is Jane.
Okay. I have no message from Jane yet. The minute I see her, I'll bring her in.
Although I believe all we need is a quorum to adjourn a meeting. We certainly have that. I would prefer to have everybody, but if that's not one of the choices available to us. We'll give her a few more seconds.
Couple more minutes. Mayor, do we need to have anyone from Legislative Affairs joining us again?
No, we will just need to timestamp the time that...
Here's Jane. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, we just need to record the time that the... so I'll announce it at any time.
There's Jane.
Okay. So we are all back this evening for the sole purpose of adjourning the meeting. And if there are any further comments, are there? Hearing none at 9:07 on August the 3rd, we will stand adjourned. Have a great week everybody. Bye.